Cooler weather is just around the corner, but while the warm weather is still here, take advantage of our $49 total home comfort checkup from Premier Heating and Air. Premier Heating and Air is a locally owned and operated company. Log on to premierishere.com and experience a premier difference today.
My name is Mitchell Lee Whittington. I live at 108 Oconee Street, Dublin, Georgia. I am retired from Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And the reason why I know, and not believe, but I know that I am the best candidate, is because I come from the construction world. And if, I don't know if we can see it, but if you look at my fingernails, I was working with some of my farm animals today. So I got dirt under my fingernails. I am the guy that get out, matter of fact, the storm, when he hit Helena, there was two officers that night with dark skin right down the street from where we're standing. I actually cleared out with my tractor. If there's problems at the school system, and it's hard to believe that city council didn't know that that was already happening, so the people that's already there that's wanting to be reelected, they're already part of the problem. Don't put back in the same problem and think the problem's gonna fix itself. You're gonna have to have new blood, people in there like myself, that's gonna make tough decisions, but it's going to be for the majority of the city of Dublin. Do I say, "Yes"? But am I Christian? Most definitely. I try to hold myself to a higher standard than most. I'm fortunate enough at this point that I'm not even physically supposed to be here in this world. I'm supposed to be a spirit right now. And I could show the scar on the side of my head, but I don't know if that's too graphic. All I have left is my dogs, me, and to work for the citizens of Dublin. We have all kinds of safety issues with power lines and communication cables laying all over the place. This needs to be addressed with a committee to make AT&amp;T, Comcast, and whoever else, Georgia Power, make these repairs. Because if not, there's a chance that a child could go up, grab a communication line that might be energized by secondaries, and actually lose their life. Another thing we need to really address is the shootings, and how do we correct it? It's more of a culture thing than it is anything else. When the father is absent, you have an issue. And if you look at the way social media is going right now, these are all the things that are being brung up. I know how to address them, because I spent 20 years in California having to deal with the same DEI issues that we have, and starting to grow here in Georgia. We need to stop them before they get to be a cancer. I'm more than glad and willing to let you have my phone number. You can call me anytime, day or night. I will drop whatever I'm doing, and I will come help you, even if it's at your own house. I think we need to address parking. I notice that there's some businesses that are having issues as far as getting clients to come in and pay for the business. So I see that as an issue. And another issue that's been happening is I go around to a lot of different breakfast places, and I'm listening to a lot of the people that live in the county, but own businesses in the city of Dublin, and they don't have a vote. They don't have a city council member that represents them, because they live in the county. I'm here to represent everybody. The county, the people who have businesses here, because I know of two businesses already left the city of Dublin. We need to bring and keep the businesses here. I've seen too many corporate businesses being brung in here. Mr. Scott Beasley, I've been doing tire work with him for 35, 40 years, and I've sent my sons by, my dad by, and he bills me on the account. Where are they working with him trying to keep his business afloat? They're not. But they don't mind putting a brand-new shiny piece of pearl, or glitter, or whatever you want to call it, out in several locations. And take and get rid of the people that sit at the same dinner table that we sit at. This needs to be all corrected. Only one person that can truly represent the blue-collar guy, the white-collar guy, and anybody of any other difference. At that location right there, I'm already leaving you my phone number. I'm telling you exactly where I live. Anybody's welcome to call, come by, because when I get here, I will represent you. I will be your friend, or at least do everything I can to be a partner to help you in any situation you need. The school system is a big thing, but there's bigger situation with the city. If this city fails, the whole county's gonna have to bail us out. Do we really want to put that burden on the county? No. Nobody wants to have to pay extra taxes. We gotta figure it, make some big cuts right off the front, because there's some things that need to be addressed. We need to quit wasteful spending. And if you notice, look at this shirt. I got two representations, and everybody should know what blue, white, and red means. But it also means something else. And this is, for me, from a biblical standpoint of view. The blue represents Democrat. The red represents Republican. And this white represents Jesus Christ. They're already having early votes, so get out now and vote, so you beat the crowd on November the 4th. I'll be out and about, which I've already been out and about in the community, but right now, you need to get out, go ahead and make this less of an issue later on the 4th. Go ahead and take care of it on a lunch break, or a second break. And if you happen to own a business, or you don't work and you stay at home, come by in the afternoon and go vote. Your vote is going to count. Every one vote, every little vote, is going to count. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. And vote for Mitchell Lee Whittington, the cowboy.
Welcome to our TV 35 Political Forum. Tonight, we are going to hear from our candidates for Dublin City School Board. This is an at-large seat. I would like to say welcome to both of our candidates tonight, Ms. Regina McCray and Mr. Jeff Davis. Thank you both for joining us. As we have for each one of our debate forums, we are going to start our evening out with a word of prayer, and then we'll have opening statements. So if you would, join me in a word of prayer.
Father, we love you. We thank you for each and every new day that you give us. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that you so abundantly pour out upon us each day. And Father, we thank you for choosing us to do your work, to be your hands and your feet in this community. I ask, Lord, that you would lead us, that you would guide us, enable us, give us boldness and clarity to do the work that you have for us in a manner that will be pleasing to you. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
We are going to start with our opening statements. Before we do that, I want to go over real quick rules. There will be no questions from the audience tonight. Ask that candidates do not speak out of turn, do not speak over the moderator or your opponent. And to remember, the purpose of this forum is to educate voters on your positions. With that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Davis if he will start with a two- to three-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Heath. Thank you, TV 35. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Mrs. McCray, thank you for coming. Thanks, all, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Davis. Here in the city of Dublin, we find ourselves in the midst of an historic catastrophe centered around the Dublin City School System. How we deal with it will determine the future of our city and this entire region. You have two very different choices before you in this election. One is to continue the failed policies that have brought us to the edge of this cliff, but the people who got us in this mess can't be the ones to get us out. The second choice is to empower the proven leadership style I have embodied and lived in this community for decades. Do you want accountability, or do you want more of the same? An unbelievable lack of transparency, discarding basic financial common sense, and a lack of speaking up and speaking out have led our school system to insolvency. We literally do not have enough money to pay our bills. I'm saying enough, no more. I'm offering to put down the shovel that has dug this hole and to pick up a broom and clean house. If you want real change and a proven leader who will always be transparent and accountable, please vote for Jeff Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. McCray?
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you for inviting me and allowing me this opportunity to come and talk about the Board of Education and why I feel like I'm the best candidate. I appreciate that. My name is Regina McCray. I'm running for the Board of Education. I am a wife to Derek McCray. We are the proud parents of three honor graduates of Dublin High School. I'm a licensed professional counselor, and I've worked in the mental health field for the past 20 years. I've been in your shoes. I've been a parent, a citizen, a property owner. I've been outraged, I've been concerned, and those same concerns propelled me to run for the Board of Education. I've been in the situation where I thought, "What is going on? We've got to fix this." And those are the reasons why I decided to lend my talents, my skills, and whatever my service, whatever I could bring to the Board of Education. I know the skill set that I possess. I'm not afraid to speak up. I'm a critical thinker. And most importantly, I understand that the connection between boardroom decisions and children, our children's academic achievement. It is with that same mindset that I have had for the past two years on the Board of Education. The Board has not been the best Board. It wasn't the best Board when I got on it two years ago, and there is still work to do. My opponent is challenging me, because he says that the leadership needs to go. However, it's worth noting that my opponent had the opportunity to challenge the longest-sitting sitting member of the Dublin Board of Education, and he chose not to. The truth is, if we want real change on our city council, on our boards, we have got to quit putting our friends on boards. We've got to challenge those who have sat in positions for years and not given us the progress that we need. And so I'm here running today, because this is what I'm passionate about. I know I want to fight, and I am fighting for those children in rooms. I am very vocal. There is a lot of work to do, and I'm committed to do that work. Real leaders don't quit. They stand up, they lean in, and they get the job done. And that's what I'm wanting to do, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with you, Ms. McCray, with our first question tonight. Why do you, or what do you believe is the most important role of a school board member?
Well, if you would have asked me that question before I got on the board, I would have told you, I would have said, "A school board member is gonna go in there and take care of business. They're gonna go in there, and they're gonna tell them what's what, and they're gonna get it done, and they're gonna change things." While I do feel like a board member is able to be impactful, I have, I understand now that the most important job that a school board member can have is to hold the administration accountable. That is the most important job in function of a school board member. A school board member often does not have the authority based on Georgia law. There are lots of things that the board member doesn't have the authority to do. But we do have the authority to hire and fire the superintendent. And so through doing that, we are able to help maintain what goes on in the administration. And so I believe that is the function of a school board member. And that is what I have tried to do as a school board member. And I think it's, we have to remember that there are seven members on a board. And so part of also holding the administration accountable is bringing board members along, because you do need enough members to be able to make certain decisions. And so, but I think the primary function is holding the administration accountable.
Okay. Mr. Davis, what do you feel is the most important role of a school board member?
It is clearly to provide oversight. On any elected board, you are the ultimate authority over the leader of that institution, be it the superintendent, or the city manager, or the county manager. There have to be votes taken, but if you know something's wrong, and you're on the wrong side of a vote, you can still speak up. You know, Mrs. McCray is right. The board does hire and fire the superintendent. Things have been bad for a long time, and the superintendent was not fired. He was given a $60,000-a-year raise, making more money than the Vice President of the United States of America, the Governor of Georgia, and the Department of Education School Superintendent. So I agree. It is to provide oversight, to speak up, and unfortunately, for all of us, Mrs. McCray has not done that.
I'm running for reelection, because I'm still running on my same principles and values. I would love to bring unity to the community. I feel that we are starting to get more and more separated instead of coming together. And so my whole thing is community. I just want to bring community back into the city of Dublin. I'm on the Parks Committee, so we renovated our parks. Oconee Gymnasium renovation is excellent. We've renovated the football field over at Oconee. We've renovated Pritchett Park, Hillbun Park. Some of those parks are still under construction. Early voting has started. I just came back home, so as soon as I leave here, I will be going to early vote. Early vote is always the best, because you never know what the weather will bring. You could vote downtown, right across from the courthouse, and then on November the 4th, you would have to vote at Stills Park Gymnasium. That's gonna be an exciting day, and I'm looking forward to being out there.
Hi, this is Meg Greer-Evans with Middle Georgia Estate Planning. And while we're thinking about Alzheimer's Awareness Month, I just want to encourage you or your family member to take a look at your estate plan, maybe pull your will out that you made 20 years ago. Make sure you've got an updated Power of Attorney and Healthcare Directive, so that your loved ones can properly follow your wishes to take care of you. If you need help with any of that, we'd be glad to help you. You can give us a call at 478-272-2885.
Hometown Supply is welcoming in spring with a bigger and better selection of zero-turn mowers, blowers, string trimmers, and a complete line of power tools for the yard.
Hometown Supply has all of your lawn and garden equipment, from zero-turn mowers to string trimmers and blowers. We carry all major parts and offer service and repair, so come see us at Hometown Supply.
And remember, Hometown Supply has a large selection of new and used appliances.
And remember, if you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
Mr. Davis, what do you think is the greatest strength of the Dublin City Schools?
It has always been unquestionably committed to excellence, since I can remember, probably in its entire history. If you played football, if you played basketball, baseball, didn't matter who your daddy was, if you weren't one of the best five on the basketball team, you weren't gonna be out there. Weren't one of the best nine on the baseball team, didn't matter, you weren't gonna be out there. The rigorous curriculum, the gifted programs, the advanced programs, you know, the technical programs. Every child doesn't want to go to college. Every child doesn't need to go to college. The vocational programs are wonderful. So the greatest strength of the Dublin City Schools, you know, was always committed to having the best teachers, and doing the most for the students, and finding a way, like a good coach, to get the absolute best out of every child, and to place them in a place after high school where they could make the greatest difference, you know, in the community, but more importantly, in their lives and in their homes. So the greatest strength of the Dublin City Schools has always been and will always be commitment to excellence.
Ms. McCray, what do you feel is the greatest strength of the Dublin City School System?
Well, first, I'd like to point out that a lot, the decision about our superintendent's salary was actually done prior to me getting on the board. However, I do feel like the greatest strength of the city schools is its ability to treat the whole child. We serve our population, our students. We serve a very unique population. A lot of our children have dealt with trauma, gun violence, poverty, a lot of issues that prevent them from, that might impact their ability to focus inside the classroom. And so I feel like Dublin City, what Dublin City Schools, at least what it was for my children, was sending them to a place where I felt like they had teachers that kind of understood the population that they were servicing. Because when you can connect with a child, you're able, and you can connect with that child, and you understand what's going on in that child's home or personal life, you're able to teach them better. At the end of the day, we want our children with clear minds, able to sit in their seat and focus and get the learning that they need, despite distractions that might be going on in their personal life. And so I feel like that is a strength to Dublin City Schools, to be able to do that. There are lots of scenarios where parents are, the school is involved in providing resources to the children and the families, providing food, feeding children while they're out of school, because a lot of times, the only time some children get to eat is when the doors are open. And so those are the unique things that I feel like make Dublin City Schools stand out.
Okay. I will start with you on the next question. Are you in agreement with the former superintendent's retirement?
Yes. Yes, I am in agreement to the former, to Dr. Williams' retirement. At the end of the day, whether you, whether you knew, didn't know, whatever the case may have been, you are responsible, it happened on your watch. And I feel like, in that case, the responsible thing to do was to step aside, because it actually started to be a hindrance to the school being able to move forward. And so I did support the retirement of Dr. Williams.
Okay. Mr. Davis, are you in agreement with the superintendent's retirement?
I don't know that it's for me to agree or disagree. He's clearly entitled to retire anytime he wants to. I know Dr. Williams has a love for the school system and never worked anywhere else. I wish he would have stuck around and kind of helped us make the transition, but I know that he will be available, as we need him to be. Yeah, it's, but, but he had lost the ability to lead. There is zero public trust in the Dublin City Schools now, and every decision that Dr. Williams made, Mrs. McCray was right there making it with him. And I wish she had chosen not to run as well, but we can put it to the voters, and that's what's great about our system.
Okay, I will start with you on this one, Mr. Davis. Someone has to be accountable. Who do you feel is responsible for the financial issues facing Dublin City Schools?
The superintendent and every board member. The finance director, which all together is the administration. I don't know what was being said behind closed doors. They love to go into executive session. But I have in my hand the reports that they sent to the state every month stating cash positions, liabilities, and their signatures are on it every month. They knew that, they knew that insurance premiums were not being paid. I don't know how you can not pay your bills and continue to function as a business. You owe the money, you're eventually going to have to pay it. So it's just extremely disappointing, and it's mind-boggling. I mean, you have to, you have to live on what you bring in. The ultimate accountability is with each individual board member, and I can't run against every board member. I can only, I can only run against one. There are reasons I ran against Ms. McCray. But the accountability is with the finance director, the superintendent, and the board. And we're about to change superintendents, we've changed finance directors, and I think it's time to change a board member.
Thank you. Ms. McCray, who do you feel would be responsible for the financial issues facing our city schools?
Obviously, we were, we were lied to. Obviously, we were given information that was not accurate. And obviously, the financial director resigned, as he should have. Dr. Williams has retired, as he should have. We were given information, and that, and we were making decisions based on that information that we were given. I'm on record lots of times, anybody that follows the Board of Education knows, I always am asking, "Is this something we can do? Can we afford this?" And when you're given that information from your, you don't have any other reason not to trust your financial director, you don't have any reason to think that your financial director is actually telling you lies. Once again, I'm new to this board, which is still mind-boggling why somebody would not challenge the longest-sitting member of the board who's been there for multiple years, a part of all the decision-making. And so when I realized, it was in November of 2024, when I realized, I had the first, I went, attended my first finance, school finance training in November of 2024. And it was at that time that I realized that, I found out that we were supposed to be getting a monthly statement where, and I didn't always, and I noticed that I didn't always see that. And it was at that time that I held the administration accountable. I went to the administration, the superintendent, and the chief financial officer, and I let them know that something's not right, because we're not receiving these reports. And it was after that, that we began to receive the reports like we were supposed to be receiving the reports. So once again, here it is, the newest board member is coming on this board and asking the right questions.
Love and Insurance, built on family values that stand the test of time. Business, home, auto, loveandinsurance.com, 478-272-6731. Stop by 510 Bellevue Avenue in Dublin. Love and Insurance, built on family values.
Hi, I'm Lily Rose Barton, and I have been coming to Bass for years. I had to come for a knee replacement recovery. I had a bad back, I came for that. But this last stint was because I had SI joint fusion, and my right leg was very weak. Muscles were weak, but they have really built me up, and it has really helped, all of them. Erica, Whitney, Chuck, they all are just so good at encouraging you to do what you can, but don't overdo. Take it slow and easy. And taking it slow and easy has got me where I am today. From the front door to the back, they're all just very, very nice and helpful, and I appreciate all of them so much. I just can't express with words what they mean to me, but I do hope they know that I appreciate everything they've done for me through the years, not just since January, when I started with this one. Chuck was just took me in, I brought the doctor's report from that, he put it into the computer, he studied what needed to be done, he instructed me how to do it, but he was right there every step of the way that first day. Not only do I do this, but when I get in the anti-gravity walking, at first, yes, I was scared, because I hadn't been able to walk that much, but I have come a long ways. So it's just been such a blessing to have Bass, to be able to come and do this therapy with them. And they're just so good to all of their patients, but I feel like they've been especially good to me, and I do appreciate them. I would highly suggest that if your doctor were to suggest therapy for you, please tell them Bass in Dublin, Georgia is where you want to go. Any of them here would just be happy to work with you and get you back on your feet and able to do things that you were not able to do before coming to Bass Therapy.
Okay, I will start with you for the next question. Can the deficit be overcome, and if so, where will the money come from?
The deficit can be overcome. And prior to Dr. Williams exiting, that is the plan, and that was the plan that had begun to be put in place. The state is also working with the school system currently, and has required that we have amended the fiscal year '26 budget, and also amended, created a balanced budget for fiscal year '27. So in doing that, you are eliminating your deficit, because you're required to show a balanced budget. balanced budget. Unfortunately, eighty to ninety percent of a school board budget is personnel. So that means that there are positions that have to be cut, there are potential programs that have to be cut. And I am a hundred percent willing to follow the recommendations of the outside CPA that recommends what programs should be cut. And I think we need to be paying attention to this because there are some that are willing to sacrifice other programs because they want to see the IGA continue. And I don't have a problem with the IGA. But if the CPA tells us that that's a program that we need to eliminate, then I am in support of that because they are looking at it from an outside position saying, this is what Dublin needs to be sustainable. And so that is how we balance our budget. Unfortunately, it means that there has to be cuts.
Mr. Davis, can the deficit be overcome? And if so, where will the money come from?
The first thing I would ask is, is what is the deficit? Does anybody know? Has anybody been told what the total deficit is? I haven't heard it. You know, it's, it's, I know that we're projected to be on a thirteen and a half million dollar hole at the end of this school year, July first. So to say that we can cut our way out of that when our budget is forty-seven million dollars a year? If you make a hundred thousand dollars in your household and I say, okay, now you've got to, you've got to do it on, you know, sixty? And you've got to pay back, that, I mean, that would be thirteen and a half million dollars, that'd be a million dollar surplus a year for thirteen years. And in that time, the board's going to change. You know, can you do it without raising property taxes? Because our property owners have suffered enough. To anybody to sit here and say, oh yeah, it's easy, we can, we can cut this, the truth is, I don't know. I know that this mess belongs to the citizens of Dublin, unfortunately. I am committed that we made this mess, even those of us who aren't on the board, and we need to clean it up. We don't need to dump it on somebody else. It will eventually be satisfied. Even if the city schools goes away, which I hope they do not, that debt stays with these citizens of the city of Dublin. So the deficit, the deficit will be paid back, it's just how soon and when and how much pain will be involved. So, but I'd, I'd love to know what it is because we haven't, we haven't heard it yet.
I'm going to start with you for our next question. There's a lot of discussion about administrative salaries. Do you feel that they're in line?
You're asking me?
Yes.
I, I do not, and a lot of those people have been cut already. The state sends out allotment sheets as far as how many positions you should have for each role, and we were way beyond those allotment sheets on a, on a lot of levels. So yeah, you, you still have to operate, but there have been people that, in the administrative office that have been let go. The, the, the most telling numbers that I saw were about a year and a half ago, Lawrence County Schools, which is not our competitor, they are our peer, they have roughly three times the enrollment of Dublin city schools. Dublin city schools administrative payroll was two point two million dollars and Lawrence County's was one point one. So while they're three times bigger than us, our admin was, was, was three times greater in, in, excuse me, double in real numbers, but in effect, it was six hundred percent greater per capita. So there were a lot of, there were a lot of positions made that, that were overpaid and weren't necessarily needed. So they've gone, unfortunately, the hole has gotten so deep that now good teachers and good staff are going to be let go. That's going to hurt the students, that's going to hurt all the children, and it's a, it's a crying shame.
Ms. McCray, do you feel that administrative salaries are in line?
No, they're not in line. Before, just historically, you, you hear the phrase, oh, they're top heavy over there. Okay, so before I got on the board, just in the community, that's what you would hear, they're paying, all the administrators are, are, are getting the money. So once I got on the board and I got an opportunity to kind of see the budget, see how things go, I realized very quickly that this scale that they have that is considered the coordinators and a director's scale, there, it's very problematic. And what I mean by problematic is it ju, it jumps a salary pretty high. And those are the individuals that end up in your, for administrative salaries. And my only concern is, first, let me say this, I don't, I believe in paying people their worth. So the discussion about pay is never about that. I mean, people should be paid their worth. And to be quite honest, if we were talking about teachers that are in the classroom and they, and these salaries and people were running around here passing out salaries to embarrass them, I would tell them to shove it because they deserve it. Teachers definitely deserve it. So it's kind of like, the problem is, is where the money, the extra money is going to. But this scale that is you, that's being used, to me, it's, it's causing these, the salaries to be, to be higher than what they probably would be anywhere else. And so what, there's two things that I think should happen. For one, I think you need to do a, a salary comparison for like similar schools in your district to find out how much positions like that pay, to make sure that you're more in line with what, what that position would pay. So that's one of the things that I think would help that. But to answer your question, yes, those, yes, those positions are, oh, and also, this is another thing that I've talked about ever since I got on the board. Sometimes you can only get what you can afford, right? So a person, to the defense of Dublin city schools, or this is the argument that we would hear a lot, most of the people that are administrators also have doctorate degrees. So on the scale, the doctorate degree is going to earn you more money because this individual typically has a doctorate degree and they also have, you know, maybe thirty plus years of experience. So they've got a lot of education and they've got a lot of years of experience, and that's going to put you up higher on the scale. I don't think anything is necessarily wrong with that, but I think what a school system has to determine is, what can you afford? I mean, can you afford a doctorate degree to be your human resource officer? You know, can you afford that position? You need to hire what you can afford, in, in my opinion.
Okay. I'm going to ask this one, and I'm going to kind of combine two questions here. I want to be more specific this time versus our city council, but East Blast, I want to know your thoughts on East Blast? And I want to know if you think the city needs new school buildings, or can they look at making better use of current facilities?
Dublin city, no. Dublin city, definitely, I'm going to say, they have stuffed, because of, in my opinion, because of the closing of Saxon, the result was to kind of, it, it, they've packed the schools. There is not a lot of space, you're not, you can't find a lot of space there. I know there's some times out in the community you hear, oh, they've got all these empty rooms and empty buildings. That is not the truth. The schools are packed, they're out of space primarily because, think about it, you took a whole school out of community and closed it, and then those children had to filter into the existing buildings. In addition to that, they're extremely old. So for Dublin city schools, yes, they, they do, they need another, they do need another school. It's not something popular to talk about right now because of the financial situation, and I understand that, but I think if you really want to talk about helping children be, you know, being in a comfortable environment, you, it's really time to add another school to give the children some space and to also just deal with the many issues. You've got roofing issues, you've got air conditioning issues, buildings that have been patched on and patched on and patched on. And I don't know how fair that is to keep doing that to our kids.
Mr. Davis, East Blast, your thoughts? And does the city need new school buildings, or is it possible to make better use of current facilities?
I'm in favor of East Blast and every sales tax that's out there, it spreads the, the tax burden over everybody, and almost half of it's paid by people who don't even live in Lawrence County or the city of Dublin. I've been told that partially because of the, the closing of Saxon, a new elementary school is projected to be needed in the area that Hillcrest serves. And East Blast would be the, the most natural way to, to gain funds for that school. East Blast is also good, it can't be spent on payroll unfortunately, but it can be used to fix roofs, fix air conditionings, anything of that, you know, of a capital nature, capital improvement. So I personally always vote yes on every sales tax that's put on the ballot because I'd rather pay it, I'd rather people who don't even live here pay it or are part of it than, than my property taxes go up. The sad fact is, if you don't get it from sales tax, you got to get it from property tax, so. But yes, I would consult with the state. If a new school is needed in the Hillcrest area or, or any area, I would certainly support, you know, using East Blast to pay for it.
Now's the time to get a great deal on the number one selling compact tractor in the U.S. Professional grade mowers, durable sidekick utility vehicles, and versatile compact tractors. It's the equipment you need to take care of your land. Right now, bring home select Kavota equipment with zero percent financing available, or save up to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Products you can count on, a name you can trust, that's Midstate Tractor and Equipment.
I'm running for reelection because I'm still running on my same principles and values. I would love to bring unity to the community. I feel that we are starting to get more and more separated instead of coming together. And so my whole thing is community. I just want to bring community back into the city of Dublin. I'm on the parks committee, so we renovated our parks. Oconee Gymnasium renovation is excellent. We've renovated the football field over at Oconee. We've renovated Pritchett Park, Hillburn Park, some of those parks are still under construction. Early voting has started. I just came back home, so as, as, as soon as I leave here, I will be going to early vote. Early vote is always the best because you never know what the weather will bring. You could vote downtown, right across from the courthouse, and then on November the fourth, you would have to vote at Stels Park Gymnasium. That's going to be an exciting day, and I'm looking forward to being out there.
I will start with you. Would you share your thoughts on the possibility of consolidation?
If the state of Georgia does not advance QBE funds to pay payroll and pay our bills, the Dublin city schools, which are insolvent, will not be able to write paychecks that will clear the bank. At that point, I don't know who will show up for work. But the state constitution says that every county must have a county school system and every county school system much, must educate every child in that county. Dublin is in Lawrence County, so we're at a point where if the state does not extend more credit, you are looking at consolidation. That is not the way to join two entities of that size by making a mess of this magnitude and then throwing it on somebody else. There would be resentment, there would be outrage, and rightfully so. I don't think that the kids of the city of Dublin would get a fair shake. Unfortunately, that is the position that our leadership and our board has put us in. We are insolvent, we are looking at consolidation every time payroll runs around.
Ms. McCray?
Can you ask the question again?
Consolidation, your thoughts?
Okay, so I've been very vocal about consolidation and, and not being a big proponent of consolidation. One of the things, I'm an army brat, so I've, you know, I grew up all over. I married the love of my life, that's what brought me to Dublin, and we had our, our children here. One of the first calls I got from my parents was, did you find a, a Christian, a private school to put them in? And I, I told them, I said, yeah, there, there's one, there, there is one here, but I don't, I don't think that's the one I want. So that was Trinity. Then I learned, you know, there's Dublin, there's East Lawrence, there's West Lawrence. West Lawrence was a little far, even though my husband is a Raider, so he would have loved the west, west side. Anyway, long story short, what I remember most about, one of the things that kept me here was the fact that I had school choice, that I could pick, if I wanted to put my kid in Trinity, I could, if I wanted to take them over to West Lawrence, I could, East Lawrence or, or Dublin. And so I'm a big proponent of, of there being school choice for, for, for families. I think that's also what makes a place, excuse me, a place, a great place to live. That in addition to the fact that I do, I think that at, at its core, Dublin city schools is a great school. A lot of times they talk about, oh, the academic achievement, this is not on par with this. And a lot of times I say, well, what do you think would happen if one year you come to school for fourth grade and you've got your teachers, and when you return to the fifth grade, all but three of your teachers are there? How do we think they're going to score on tests? So there's not, there hasn't been a lot of, our children have not been given a lot of the stability, and the ones that have achieved have done it in spite of and have been extremely resilient. And so when you start talking about consolidation, I'm always like, well, before we get to consolidation, what can we do to make it work? Because I believe that as a community, and in a community like Dublin, that there's enough minds in this city to be able to make it work. Now, everybody's, in my opinion, it becomes about, there's a fight over control. The school can be here, but if we want to control it, or this one wants to control. I don't want to get into that because at the end of the day, our children lose. So I want our children to win, I want our children, I want our teachers to win, and I feel like as a community, we can come up with a solution for that before we have to talk about consolidation. Now, Mr. Davis is talking about that we are insolvent and the state is coming and that, as a board member, that's not the information that I'm getting from Richard Wood and the individuals that they've placed at the school with us. They are completely working with us. We have a plan. So the doors of Dublin city schools are not closing tomorrow. And so there's not going to be this thing where we've got to figure out who's, who come to work and where the kids are going to go. There is still room for improvement and an opportunity to improve, and that's what I believe, that's what I want to fight for.
Okay, I will start with you with this next question, then, looking ahead, what are the top two or three goals that you would hope to accomplish?
Well, for starters, we've got to, we've got to restore the trust in the school system and, 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 and the leadership. That, that, because it, beyond all your good intentions, if there's not a good trusting working relationship, then honestly, it really doesn't matter what you do because if the, if there's no trust out there, then that kind of erodes all your best efforts. So one goal would be to begin to try to repair, repair relationships. Also, a major goal is to figure out what, what damage has been done to our children during this whole process. Because I, I'm, they are the losers in this, our teachers, our children, to come to work or just to come in, in, on your job and to come to school and have to worry about, are we going to be here tomorrow? Is my job gone? My teacher's, my teacher's crying, or my teacher can't focus, the teacher's not focusing, she can't teach the kids? And so we've got to get some, first of all, good information. I always have felt like one of the, the worst things on the Board of Education is that information, the information that people need to know was not flowing properly. And because of that, people are able to say what they want to say and that narrative goes out there. But for a long time, they tell you, oh, this is, you know, there's protocols and there's these procedures. And so it's very frustrating. But I feel like as a goal, my goal, I'm always an educator because I feel like when you understand better, then you, you, you do better and you know better. And so I feel like for me moving forward, what I've learned in these two years needs to happen is, we have to be more vocal about helping people understand what's really going on. Because a lot of times, people feel their own narrative in. And there are, there is a group of people, there, there are different pockets of people, people serve their own self-interest. And sometimes they, they're, they can be the loudest voices and they overtake. So a goal in addition to trying to rebuild the trust and take care of our children so that they can be academically sound and we can get what they need, it would be to also educate the people. In my best days, if we could bring our teachers back, that would be even better.
Okay.
Sorry, I know I'm wrong.
Mr. Davis, two or three goals that you would hope to accomplish?
The first would be new leadership. My style, my leadership style and Mrs. McCray's are just not the same. When I'm wrong, I say I'm wrong, when I mess up, I say I messed up, and I'm going to try and find out a way to do better. If you've noticed, she's a new board member when things don't suit her, but she's also the vice chairman of the But she's also the vice chairman of the, of the school board. I don't know how to make that make sense. She did not know the position, the financial position the school was in. But these that were given by the board office, all of '24, or fiscal year '25, so July 24 through June 30th of '25, it shows clear as a bell that we're in a deficit. We're not paying our insurance premiums. You know, we raised property taxes 25% because our health insurance is going up, and then we didn't pay the health insurance premiums. And she knew we weren't paying them. That's not leadership. She said they were lied to, and they were given false information, which is astounding. I mean, that's fraud, that's conspiracy. Did she call, did she join the call to bring the GBI in to find the money and to hold those people accountable? No, she did not. To the best of my recollection, Mr. Lanier and Mrs. Smith did. The board went into executive session, which you can only do for real estate purchases, human resources issues, and pending litigation. Asking the GBI to start an investigation is not pending litigation. That is not a legitimate, valid reason to go into executive session. But they did, and when they came out, the full board did not ask for the GBI to get involved. So listen to that, we were lied to, we were given false information. That is criminal, but I will not call for a criminal investigation. So new leadership is desperately sorely needed on this board. By doing that, you will get to number two, rebuilding public trust. There is zero public trust in the Dublin City Schools right now. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, the people who got us in this mess will not be the ones to get us out. And again, it seems small, but transparency. What is the deficit? Why has this not been done? Why didn't you call for the GBI? You know, it is a pet peeve of mine, when you go to a board meeting, somebody's always telling you to sign a signing sheet. Not to speak, just as soon as you walk in, sign the signing sheet. You don't have to sign a signing sheet to attend a public meeting in the state of Georgia. That is an intimidation tactic, plain and simple. They don't want you there, they don't want you asking questions. You know, why can't we go on Facebook Live at the board meetings? And why, you know, why don't we tell anybody, you know, we don't want anybody finding out? So I think I addressed it, new leadership, rebuild public trust, and increase transparency.
I'm running for reelection because I'm still running on my same principles and values. I would love to bring unity to the community. I feel that we are starting to get more and more separated instead of coming together. And so my whole thing is community. I just want to bring community back into the city of Dublin. I'm on the Parks Committee, so we renovated our parks. Oconee Gymnasium renovation is excellent. We've renovated the football field over at Oconee. We've renovated Pritchett Park, Hillburn Park. Some of those parks are still under construction. Early voting has started. I just came back home, so as soon as I leave here, I will be going to early vote. Early vote is always the best because you never know what the weather will bring. You could vote downtown, right across from the courthouse. And then on November the 4th, you would have to vote at Stels Park Gymnasium. That's going to be an exciting day, and I'm looking forward to being out there.
October is Rocktober here at Dublin Nissan. With savings up to $7,500, it's time to rock and roll in a new Rock Creek Pathfinder. If a Murano is more of your taste, we can save you up to $8,000. So come check out our great selection and pick one out. And with the only V6 in this class and a great selection, Dublin Nissan has the frontier for you. We've got J.D. Powers Number One Rated Brand, and we've stacked them deep so we can sell them cheap. So now's the time to get to Dublin Nissan. And come see the Heisman, only at Dublin Nissan.
Hey, it's Stephanie again at Shamrock Honda Kawasaki, and I wanted to show you an adrenaline rush. We have the brand new Kawasaki Teryx H2, 250 horsepower, supercharged, fastest side-by-side on the market. This unit has a digital speedometer, five-point harness for safety, a bed for storage. And then we also have the Garmin Tread app that you can download your favorite music and display it on the dashboard. Come in and see us today at Shamrock Honda Kawasaki CF Moto, 106 Savannah Avenue, East Dublin, Georgia.
Okay, we've got a few minutes left, and we're going to allow you to ask one another a question.
Okay, well, I don't have a question, but I did want to, well, go ahead, maybe he has a question for me. I was going to say I do have a response to something he said.
Okay, well, and let's try to keep these to about two minutes if we can.
And I'll be happy for her to work that response in and take all the time she needs. What I would ask her is how did the Dublin City Schools get in this financial crisis? And if the information you were given is bad, that's fine, but every month, it's negative, it's not working out. You saw this. Where was your leadership then? How did we get where we are? And where was your leadership?
Are you concerned about John Bell's leadership? Maybe Lanier, you keep calling Lanier and Mandy, are you concerned about their leadership? Because you're concerned about mine. But I will tell you what I did when I found out we weren't getting much.
Am I allowed to run for this seat or not, that you hold that you think is yours? Am I allowed to run for it, yes or no?
Excuse me?
Am I allowed to run for this seat that you think is yours?
That I think is mine.
Right, that I'm not allowed to run for.
But you're saying that you're running because the leadership made bad choices, but I'm just confused about your real motives. But if you want to be on the board with your friends, so your job and hope are saying, that's part of it. But you mentioned that I was fully aware that we were not paying health payments. That is a lie. I don't know where you get that from. In November of 2024, like I said, you can go, and I have emails and receipts to prove it. I sent an email because I, as a new board member, not a vice chair, simply as a board member, first time on the board, was not receiving something that I found out we were supposed to be receiving. So the existing leadership that is there never raised that question, apparently, but I did. And as a result, we began to see what the real results were. So Mr. Davis is claiming that on these, he's talking about the monthly financial statements, and he's claiming that on these financial statements, there's a line that says health payments, and that we knew these health payments were not being paid. That is not true. So I just, I wish you would not say, you might say what you knew or what your friend knew, but don't say what I knew.
Ma'am, what is that? And is that your signature?
And can you tell me, where's the health payment?
It says payroll withholdings, ma'am.
That is not the health payment.
What is it then? What are you withholding payroll taxes?
That, so, and you're saying that that money is not going, and you're saying that money's not going to the state?
It's not, it's a liability on that financial.
It's saying it's not, where's the liability? Show me that.
Ma'am, it says right here, liabilities and fund.
And that this is not money going to the state, is what you're saying?
It's a liability, it is owed.
And this form, like I say, Mr., any of the other.
Is that your signature?
As a new board member, I went to get training. Yes, it's my signature, and it's public record, so it's never been a secret. Do you know when these forms were signed?
I assume the date that's on it.
That's your assumption, why are you assuming?
Because it has a date right there, and it has your signature.
That doesn't mean that it was signed that day.
So your signature was forged?
That doesn't mean it was signed that date.
When was it signed?
I just explained to you, there was a time, yes I did, there was a time where we did not even receive these. And as a new board member, I didn't know. But the leadership that you're talking about, that you say should stay on the board, they knew. They've been on this board years. I was new. When I got training and I found out, that's when I came back and demanded answers. So, you know, this is a nice little ploy you come up with, and to say that we on this board knew that health payments were not being paid, we did not know that.
It's right there in black and white, ma'am. I will post this online.
You don't have to post it, it's public knowledge. You can go to the website. You can go to the website.
That's okay. Would you like to ask a question of Mr. Davis?
Well, you know, one thing that was very interesting to me is Mr. Davis talks about how great of a leader he is, how great he's done on all the boards he's sat on, you know, even if he was a county commissioner, he didn't win the election last year, but he's done so, he's been the best leader there. When, one of the big hot topics in this town has been about the school board and its mileage rate. The school board was asked to roll back its mileage rate down to maybe 15, I think. At the time, based on the information we got, we were not able to do that. In effect, we dropped it. We didn't drop it all the way, but we did lower the mileage rate. As a result, it did end up in a tax increase. However, when you are deciding how much taxes, when you decide how much taxes you pay, it is, also, it's based on the mileage rate and your property taxes. We had a whole tax assessor board that went many years without assessing properties. Mr. Davis was a commissioner at that time. I never heard him say anything about the fact that our properties weren't being, weren't being assessed, even though he, his board appoints tax assessors. So you can find, and as a result, a lot of our property values skyrocketed, and it also impacted that tax increase that we got. Because if our tax, if our property values hadn't have skyrocketed, we would have ended up not paying as much as we paid. Because the Dublin City School and the Lawrence County Schools, Lawrence County Schools both dropped its mileage rates. However, Mr. Davis, who was a county commissioner and says that he ran a perfect board, I never heard anything, I never heard any information about that, or any concern as to why our properties weren't being assessed in over seven years.
Want to address that?
So I think what Ms. McCray is saying is that the revaluation wasn't done for seven years. That's true, I was not on the Board of Assessors, but it doesn't matter when the revow comes out. If the tax digest doubles, you can roll your rate back to whatever. They did not. They raised your taxes. It doesn't matter what the digested evaluations are, there's a rollback rate, and they didn't roll it back. They raised taxes. I stand on my record as a county commissioner, I was on eight boards. We rolled back the mileage rate 100% every time. We never raised taxes. We had a $6 million surplus when I came on. We had a $24, $25 million surplus when I came off. And every budget in eight years I had was balanced when it was passed and went on to achieve a surplus. Is that something you'd like to see on the Dublin City Board of Education? Or would you like for Ms. McCray to continue to raise your taxes and just to say it's not her fault? She's a new board member. I'm the vice chairwoman, but I'm a new board member. It's not my fault. This isn't my signature. Where does it say liability? I mean, it's right here in black and white. She signed it every month. And I wouldn't like her record either. If her record was my record, I'd be upset too, but it is her record. She can't defend it. You know, there's an old saying that lawyers have in the courtroom. When you have the facts on your side, argue the facts. When you have the law on your side, argue the law. And when you don't have the facts or the law on your side, scream and holler. And that's what you've seen Ms. McCray do tonight. So please remember that when you go to the voting booth. Early voting starts tomorrow. By the time you see this, early voting will have started. I think it's clear that a change is desperately needed.
You know, Mr. Davis, ever since this has started, he's made this about trying to point out Ms. McCray. And if that makes him or anybody in the community feel better, that's fine. What is going on at the city schools is not new. It's been going on. That's the reason why I ran, that's the reason why I got on the board. And that's the reason why I choose to still fight. The, the information that he talked about, investigations. Currently, Matt Hatchet has put together a team from the state that has come down and is also auditing the Dublin City Schools. This is a top team. They said this has never been done. It was put together by our state legislators. These are at the top. So these people are very well capable of looking in the books and determining what problems are there, what caused the problems, and getting a solution. I feel very confident about that. In addition to that, the school has outside CPAs that have also come in and looked at the books. So I feel confident about that. And I am also awaiting that information. And based on that information, will let us know what we need to, how we need to proceed, and what we need to do, do next. And so this is not about passing the book on responsibility or accountability. It's just about trying to understand what people's true motives and intentions are. And I know what mine are. Mine are to be a vocal voice, to speak up for children, to advocate in the way that I have. If you follow the board, if you come to board meetings, you know that's what I do. That's exactly what I do. And if I'm given that opportunity, I will continue to do that.
You want to go ahead and follow up with the closing statement?
I can do that, yep. I am so parched, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity. Thanks for your time. Thank you all for coming and listening to a very lively debate. I don't know anything else to do but to speak from my heart. It's my heart's passion that drove me to the Board of Education. And it is my desire to ensure that all children have a voice, to ensure that our children have what they need to be productive citizens in our community. At the end of the day, we are a community, and our children are our best investment. What we invest in them, it pays off for us in the long run. And so we have to make sure that they are a priority in all that we do. I come, I show up. This is basically a voluntary position. You know, nobody, you can't, no one on this board does it for money. It's nothing about that. These are all heart issues and passion issues. It's not even notoriety, because right now, it's not even popular to say you're on the Board of Education right now. So you're not doing this because you want somebody to give you a high five. But there are some serious issues. And I believe that the leadership change in the administration is really going to help move the school forward. And I believe in continuing to be that voice and asking those tough questions. So this is my call out to the community. You know, we need our community. Dublin City Schools, we can't look for anybody to try to save the Dublin City Schools. We have to save ourselves. And that means relying on us as a community. You know, we need our pastors, we need our, our youth leaders, we need our retired teachers. You know, we need, we need our volunteers, our community activists. We need all those, those people in the community to also pour into our children to make sure they're still getting what they need in spite of the things that they're going through right now. Because I'm not so sure that they're not able to have a distracted, free learning environment. And so this is my plea to the community. I need your support, I need your voice. You know, you just pay attention to what is going on and what people's real intentions are when people want to be on a board with their friends. And we need people that are, that their allegiance is to our children and to fighting for our children. And so I ask you for your support, I ask you for your voice, I ask you for your prayers. Because no matter what happens, our city, our school, we need your prayers. And so I thank you for that, and I ask that you would go out and press Regina McCray for Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you all for taking the time to become informed on this monumental issue. As I said at the beginning, there are two very different choices in this race, and you should have saw two very different leadership styles tonight. A vice chair who consistently says she's a new board member, who led the Dublin City Schools into insolvency, blames others and denies black and white financial statements, says she was lied to, information was withheld, doesn't call for the GBI to get involved. On the other hand, you have a proven leader with over two decades of proven success in business, reinvesting all the profits in this community, and being successful in public office. Those are two stark choices. The easiest way to get elected is to tell people what they want to hear, to make personal insults, impugn motives to other people, to offer solutions you have no intention of putting into place, to not tell the whole truth, to make excuses and blame others, to hide behind religion or personal attacks, to speak loudly about your core values but abandon them when the heat rises and the pressure builds. These are all things I've never done and never will do. People who know me even a little bit know the following is true. I'd rather be hated for who I am than loved for who I am not. Why is all this important? Because the road ahead for the Dublin City Schools is rough. There is zero public trust in the institution I'm seeking to serve, the Dublin City Board of Education. Tough choices will have to be made, crow will have to be eaten, and abuse will be heat. And abuse will be heaped on whomever holds this seat and is on the board. It doesn't bother me. Come what may, no matter what, I'll do the right thing, even if it costs me personally. I don't give a damn about a title or personal recognition. If there was another way to be directly involved in the crucial decisions in the days that lie ahead, I would have chosen that avenue to serve, but there simply isn't. So here I am, a proud Dublin City Schools parent, product. I'm unafraid, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I'm willing to fight for something that is infinitely worth fighting for, our children, our school system, our city, and our community. All three of our children, Jennifer's and mine, are fine athletes and fine students. And I tell them all over and over, you are only responsible for the effort. God is responsible for the result. By qualifying and campaigning, I am making the greatest effort I know how to make. If you care about the crisis our community is currently in, the best effort you can make is to vote and make sure all your friends and family, anywhere and everywhere in the city of Dublin, vote for Jeff Davis. Thank you, God bless you, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you, Ms. McCray. And thank you for joining us tonight.